Council order, like call it the order. All persons are present. Item three is presentation of the colors by the Wisconsin Rapids Police Department Honor Guard, which we'll hold over for at another meeting. But item four is the Pledge of Allegiance and Silent Prayer in lieu of invocation. If you could please stand.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item five is a ceremonial oath, which we will be also holding over for a future date. Item six is, sorry, I had my microphone off. Said item five will be holding over for a future date. Item six is the reading of the minutes of the previous meeting held on June 20th. What are your wishes? We have a motion to approve.
Yeah, motion to approve.
By Venemen, seconded by Zachar. Any corrections or comments? Alright, seeing none, please cast your ballots. That motion carried eight A's, zero N's. On to item seven, consider for confirmation Mayor Blazer's appointments to various committees, commissions, and boards. What are your wishes? We have a motion by Austin to approve, seconded by Venemen. Any questions? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. That motion carried eight A's, zero N's. Welcome, Elizabeth. We're on to item eight, which is consider for approval an ordinance adding a yield control on Avon Street at 14th Street North as recommended for approval by the Public Works Committee meeting at its meeting held on June 8th, see attachment three. Now, what are your wishes? So there's a motion to approve the item, Dennis? Okay, I have a motion to, by Pollock, seconded by Katna. Any comments, questions? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. That motion carried eight A's, zero N's. We're on to item nine, which is consider for approval a new leachate agreement with Advanced Cranberry Creek Landfill as recommended by, as recommended for approval by the Wastewater Treatment Commission. I believe you shall have a copy. So we have a motion by Tom, Mr. Reom, to approve. And we have a second by Mr. Zachar, Mr. Katna.
Is it, is it, I don't know if anybody's here from wastewater, but can anybody explain the changes in the agreement or what's different than the previous one?
Joe, are you able to kind of cover that a little bit?
No, I don't believe so, but.
Okay. Maybe Sue can.
Sue's definitely involved.
There's a, did you get the, the two-page?
Yeah.
And then, I guess.
You could just go over like the highlights of what's, what's different. Because we're, we're working with a larger advanced disposal now compared to the old Cranberry Creek, right? So.
Well, it's the same, same organization that it's been for the past few years, but I mean, I guess I, all of the changes are on this, but I guess the expiration date, we're only going to push it out for about another year and a half just to kind of see how, how well the plant is handling the leachate and how the mechanisms in, in the agreement, how well they are handling our, our, the treatment plant. And so the daily limit, I think we, we moved away from a monthly average flow exceedance and concentrated on the, the daily flow and daily flow exceedances. Because if you did the math on that, it was such that they could really exceed a lot in a month and not exceed the average flow exceedance, but then, but we're still exceeding the daily flow and not really getting penalized for that. So, and then we, we increased it that the more, the penalty basically for going over is, 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 has a multiplying factor so that the, the more they go over, the, the more punitive is, it is, it is in effect or the more they would need to pay. So that's kind of a difference of the structure for number two and three. We added some testing requirements that are now part of the wastewater treatment plant permit. And then five, the back page there is a number of extra costs that we would maintain that the wastewater treatment plant has to have because of the leachate, specifically treating the leachate. So they've agreed to basically pay another thirteen, almost thirty-one thousand dollars or so towards the UV lighting, the mercury pollutant minimization program, and towards our flushing the lines program. And that's just an acknowledgement that, that some of that, more of that cost could be paid by them, and so they're willing to do that. So those are the main, the main, the main parts of it. And as I stated in here, it's really not, the goal is not to be punitive or to try to, you know, make more money on them, or it's more to get them, to have them be in compliance and control their leachate a little better than, than maybe they have been. And then it's kind of a win-win for both of us where the plant doesn't get upset and, but then they also are able to, you know, handle their leachate and, and continue their business. So hopefully, that's why it's a shorter-term contract, is just to see how these new numbers and these new fees shake out in the next year and a half.
Thank you for your due diligence on that. I think this is a well-structured contract. For reasons you said, I noticed some changes, so I just wanted you to browse over the basics there. One more question, if we enter an agreement like this, we will not be put in a position, once the agreement expires, that perhaps we are held to this agreement prior to it expiring?
No, this is, this is different with a, a private company, and it's not sewer, sewer services. It's leachate services. So this, this is somewhat different in terms of the terminating the contract. We can just say we're, we're not going to handle your leachate anymore. A lot of wastewater treatment plants do not handle leachate, so, especially direct pipe like we do. But we don't anticipate any, any issues hopefully, but I think they, you know, they're, they have options if we don't want to take their leachate, and that would be probably trucking it to other areas, which would be much more expensive for them, but it's not like they would have no options if we said no to them.
But the direct flow pipe, I mean hypothetically, the contract expires, we turn it off, or what do we?
Put a big old plug in it?
Yep.
Okay, alright, thank you, thank you for your work on this.
Any other questions? Alright, seeing none, please cast your ballots. That motion carried eight A's, zero N's. We're on to item 10, consider for adoption the action of the Plan Commission at its meeting held on July 6th. Mr. Kearns?
Thank you, Mayor. The Plan Commission met at 4:00 PM on July 6th in the council chambers. A quorum of members was present. Furthermore, a list of others in attendance is available in our office or the clerk's office. The meeting was called to order at 4:00 PM. Item one was the approval of the report from June 5th. Motion by Tao, seconded by Kubashak to approve the June 5th meeting minutes. That motion carried six, zero. Item two was a request from Badger Land Survey for a certified survey map to combine two lots at 1811 25th Avenue South, parcel IDs identified, and to dedicate right away on 25th Avenue. Staff provided a summary of the request recommending approval. There was a motion by Daven, seconded by Kubashak to approve the request. That motion carried six, zero. Item three was a request from Keller Inc. for architectural review for commercial facade improvement to a principal structure and accessory structure at 4200 8th Street South. Parcel is identified. Again, staff gave a review of the request and recommended approval with conditions. There was a motion by Kubashak, a second by Blazer, to approve the request with the five conditions outlined in the staff report. That motion carried six, zero. Item four was a request from the City of Wisconsin Rapids for a planned development district amendment, a minor alteration to expand patio area at walkway extension and install a shade sail structure at 220 3rd Avenue South. Again, staff recommended approval and provided a summary of the request. There was a motion by Austin, seconded by Tao, to approve that request subject to two conditions outlined in the staff report. That motion carried six, zero. I do need to make a correction here. It looks like item, what would be item five is not noticed, noticed appropriately, so we will add that. But item five is a request from the City of Wisconsin Rapids. It's public hearing in action on a request to amend Chapter 11 of the zoning ordinance, specifically Article 15, related to fencing, to modify various sections, including general requirements, dimensional requirements, and fence materials. Staff provided a summary. The public hearing opened at 4:16 PM. Nobody spoke against or in favor. That public hearing closed at 4:17. There was additional discussion in which staff responded. Eventually, there was a motion made by Blazer, seconded by Daven, to approve the ordinance amendment as presented. That motion carried six, zero. What is noticed as item five needs to be changed to item six, which is adjournment. There was a motion by Kubashak to adjourn the meeting, seconded by Tao. That motion carried six, zero. The meeting adjourned at 4:31 PM. Thank you.
We have a motion by Venemen to approve, seconded by Austin. Any discussion? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. That motion carried seven A's to one N. We're on to item 11, which is consider for adoption the action of the standing committees of the common council as follows. Item A is Finance and Property Committee meeting held on July 11th. Mr. Zachar?
Thank you, Mayor Blazer. Finance and Property Committee meeting, date was July 11th, 2023. All members of the Finance and Property Committee were present. Item one, call the order. Chairperson Zachar called the meeting to order at 4:02 PM. Item two, presentation by the Wisconsin Rapids Area Convention and Visitors Bureau on the state of tourism in Wisconsin Rapids. Meredith Kloker from the Wisconsin Rapids Area Convention and Visitors Bureau gave a presentation on the state of tourism in Wisconsin Rapids. Item three, review bid results for the remodel project at Fire Station Number Two and consider award to the low-qualified bidders. It was moved by Bemke, seconded by Venemen, to approve the following low-qualified bids as presented totaling eighty-five thousand dollars, which also includes asbestos as abatement. Electrical current technologies, current technologies for five thousand two hundred seventy-six dollars. HVAC Eagle Construction for nine thousand three hundred fifty dollars. Plumbing, Williams Plumbing and Heating for twenty-six thousand two hundred dollars. General Trade Eagle Construction for twenty-eight thousand eight hundred ninety dollars. Flooring and wall tile, reish tile for seven thousand six hundred dollars. Painting, AJ's painting and coating for one thousand seven hundred forty-five dollars. An additional ten thousand dollars in contingency funds as needed, requiring mayor approval for the remodel project at Fire Station Two. Motion carried three to zero. Item four, consider request from China Palace LLC doing business as China Palace from some Solazar agent for retail Class B fermented malt beverages and retail Class B intoxicating liquor licenses for the premises located at 2113 A Street South. It was moved by Zachar, seconded by Venemen to approve, and the motion carried three to zero. Item five, consider requests from SBG Apple North 9 LLC doing business as Applebee's Neighborhood Bar and Grill, Grill and Bar. Casimir Benisek agent for retail Class B fermented malt beverages and retail Class B intoxicating liquor licenses for the premises located at 4311 A Street South. It was moved by Zachar, seconded by Venemen, to approve the request, and the motion carried three to zero. Item six, request from the Community Development Department to apply for a 2024 Wood County Economic Development Grant in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars to create a downtown development master plan and to utilize fifty thousand in tax increment District Seven for the project. It was moved by Venemen, seconded by Zachar. To approve the motion, to approve a request from the Community Development Department to apply for the 2024 Wood County Economic Development Grant in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars to create a downtown development master plan and utilize fifty thousand dollars in the tax increment District Seven for the project. Motion carried three to zero. Item seven, budget discussion. The budget was discussed, no action was taken on this item. Audit of the bills, it was moved by Bemke, seconded by Zachar, to approve check numbers 17334 to 17811. Motion carried three to zero. Set next meeting date, number nine. Next regular committee meeting will be held Tuesday, August 8th, 2023 at 4:00 PM. Item 10, in open session, the committee may vote to go into closed session under Section 19.851E of Wisconsin statutes, which reads, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. It was moved by Bemke, seconded by Venemen, to go into closed session. Motion carried three to zero, and they went into closed session. In closed session, the committee may discuss negotiations and strategy and consider an offer regarding the sale of vacant city-owned land located at an unaddressed parcel southeast of Angle Drive between Sixth Street South and Eighth, Eighth Street South, parcel ID 34-12985. In closed session, the committee discussed the negotiations and strategy and considered an offer regarding the sale of vacant city-owned land located at the unaddressed parcel southeast of Angle Drive between Sixth Street South and Eighth Street South, parcel ID 34-12985. Item 11, the committee, committee may adjourn in closed session or may return to open session. It was moved by Venemen, seconded by Bemke to return to open session. And then they made the motion, which carried three to zero. The committee returned to open session. Item 12, the committee returns to open session. Committee may take action regarding the sale of the vacant city-owned land located at an unaddressed parcel southeast of Angle Drive between Sixth Street South and Eighth Street South, parcel ID 34-1298, 985. It was moved by Venemen, seconded by Bemke to accept the offer, and the motion carried three to zero. Item 13, adjournment is moved by Bemke, seconded by Venemen, to adjourn. Motion carried three to zero, and the meeting adjourned at 5:47 PM. With that, I submit the minutes to be approved.
Is that your motion?
It was not.
Oh, okay.
Now I'll make a motion to approve the minutes, the minutes.
Motion by Zachar.
I'd like to hold something out.
Yep, what item would you like to hold out?
I'd like to hold out three and six.
Three and six. Three and six. Okay. So what do we have? I'm assuming we're just talking that you're okay with closed session item, that we don't need to go in closed session at the end with the purchase of that parcel? Okay, is there a second to the motion?
When the balance of the report?
Well, correct. Second, yeah. Yep, and everyone's good holding out three and six. Okay, any discussion on the balance of the report? Okay, seeing none, please cast your ballots. That motion carried seven A's, one N. Regarding item three, Mr. Venemen.
Yeah, I'm just, I guess I'm just wondering why, I can't remember off the top of my head, why there's an additional ten thousand in contingency funds in that motion.
I can't remember what was specifically said at the meeting, but all projects have a contingency amount set aside in them, that they do. And there's eight percent.
That's just, that's.
Yep.
Why, and that amount was determined.
Tim, do you know, I.
I think the, the amount of money above and beyond what the bids came in, if I remember, there was some asbestos removal.
Oh, yeah.
Costs that were part of the project, and then obviously a contingency amount of which, that amount can only be spent if it's approved by, by the mayor.
And my, and you, I believe.
My vote.
A double approval.
So that asbestos was within that ten thousand? Because in, above it says it's within the eighty-five, or is the eighty-five when you add, and you add up?
That was a ten percent.
Okay.
Yeah.
Alright, that's fine on that one then.
What are your wishes on item three? We have a motion by Bemke to approve, seconded by Zachar. Any further discussion? Seeing none? Right, please cast your ballots. That motion carried seven A's, one N. And item six.
Yes, I, sorry. I guess I was just, I'm concerned about approving the utilization of the fifty thousand in the, in the TIF when we don't know how much the master plan's gonna cost.
I guess Kyle, any?
Because we didn't have a, it was kind of a, that meeting was interesting, and we were trying to determine dollars, but we don't know what the master plan, and so I'm, I'm more inclined to, I'm certainly happy proven, applying for the grant, but I think the additional money should be in a separate. That's my feeling. Because we don't have the dollar amount to the master plan. So while we pulled fifty thousand, if it's out of a hat, if you will. And that's kind of where I'm at on that.
I guess Jake, do you?
I, I got a couple things. One question for Kyle. Can we apply for the grant without committing the fifty thousand? Find out if we get it, and then it comes back? Or do we have to, have to put up the fifty thousand?
So the intent would be to utilize whatever portion out of the fifty thousand dollars. So the fifty thousand dollars has been identified in the project plan for the downtown TIF. If the, if the RFPs come back and, you know, we choose one for forty-nine or, you know, sixty-five, under the seventy-five thousand dollars, obviously, we try to maximize the twenty-five thousand dollars through the ED grant, and then any remaining portion would come out of the, the TIF monies. You know, at this point, you know, you could argue, is it putting the cart before the horse? If, you know, we, we try to release RFPs, but then we can't assure those respondents that we have funding for the project. Similarly, I'd compare this to like the Corp. Plan that the, the Parks Department did in cooperation with our office. You know, we, we allocated funding, I believe, and then solicited RFPs to, you know, see what the cost would be, and then selected, not necessarily based on the lowest bid, but based on who we thought would do the plan well. And the Corp. stands for the Comprehensive Outdoor Recreation Plan, which was done in 2021, I believe.
So we, we can't apply for the grant unless we commit the fifty thousand, or can we?
I believe the, the motion made, I believe, was that the fifty thousand was contingent upon grant approval from the Wood County Economic Development Committee.
Okay. And then, I guess my second piece is, I think we kind of talked about this at the meeting, but why can't we release RFPs without putting the, the funds up first? And then consider if we have the amount of money to do the project. You mentioned cart before the horse, I think that we use that term a lot, but I just don't see why we can't release the RFP, find out what the cost is gonna be, what our options are, and then approve the funding. But I guess if you could speak to that.
Yeah, you know, I kind of alluded to it that, you know, I think it kind of solidifies our commitment to the project, right? If we release an RFP, I think it's understood that any respondents to that RFP, if selected, are gonna get the job. So I'd hate to release an RFP and say, you know, oh, by the way, we haven't technically funded the project yet, so while maybe we're selecting you, we still have to go back to common council for approval of those dollars. I think also with regards to the grant application, we have a stronger application if we have that match component, so to speak, versus, you know, no match, right? To say that we're willing to put forward what would be a, a three, or a two-to-one match, you know, fronting fifty thousand dollars to get twenty-five thousand, or up to fifty thousand. I don't think realistically, you know, out of respondents will probably have, you know, all of them at that seventy-five thousand dollar level. Obviously, it's going to be a competitive process, and we could obviously select the lowest bid through the RFP process. But I think, you know, being able to maximize those TIF dollars as they were planned for originally in the recent amendment to that TIF is in the city's best interest for this master plan. Again, as a reminder, that expenditure period ends in 2027, I believe. So, you know, Tim, correct me if I'm wrong, but if those, you know, that increment isn't utilized, it'll cycle back into those taxing jurisdictions after the closure of that TIF.
And what else could we do at the TIF? Is this, I mean, the, the money's there, right? Maybe you can speak to specifically that this isn't necessarily coming out of the general fund, but it's coming out of the TIF. Can you speak, speak to that, what that means, and then what we could possibly do with that otherwise if we didn't go into just developing a plan?
Yeah, so typically, when you create a TIF district, you have to identify projects within the TIF that relate to, mostly relate to infrastructure improvements. You can obviously use it for incentives for development as well. So as part of our project plan originally, you know, we had different infrastructure projects, and we came back and we amended it. The project planned to include several other projects, I think one of which was the bridge lighting project. There was the fifty thousand dollars for neighborhood planning, which is what we're citing to offset the cost for this master plan. You know, Tim might be able to speak to additional items identified in the project plan, but that's based off of the increment that exists within that TIF district. And again, Tim can speak further to this, but I believe when that TIF closes, we're projecting about a three million dollar increment that we can utilize for those, for the implementation of those projects identified in the plan.
The potential plan, right?
Uh, no, the TIF project plan. So that is, that is a for-sure thing, that, that TIF project plan exists and governs what we do with that increment.
Sure, I mean, just, just kind of just pulled up the, the TIF project plan. Some of the, the projects that are identified in that plan is like the river wall maintenance. We have that issue. The bridge lighting, public parking enhancements, property acquisition for the Triangle property. One of the big projects is relocation of the CN Railroad. That goes back to when the TIF was originally formed back in 2004, I do believe. Neighborhood planning, which Kyle cited earlier, and then development incentives for any type of projects that might occur in the, in the TIF.
Thank you. So I'd just like to make sure that this motion is made, it was made, that we're applying for the grant, we're not fully committing the fifty that will come back to finance. Or if this passes tonight, we're fully committed to that fifty if we win the grant and then it's spent?
So the request was originally made to include earmarking the fifty thousand dollars to be utilized for a master plan. So the, the approval, it was requested for the approval to include the fifty thousand dollars of TIF funding or TIF increment identified in the project plan to cover the costs for a master plan. I believe that was the motion that was made contingent upon receiving the Economic Development Grant from the county.
Contingent on the grant, okay.
Tom, go ahead. Sorry, Jake.
Thank you, Your Honor. That's the reason I wish to be a speaker down here, down the line, but I, I don't remember that that was contingent upon. I thought it was added, I, I thought we, to apply for the twenty-five, but if we didn't get it, the fifty was there. It's to be a more, I don't know if it'd be a word to say, maybe if it's entice or whatever, people to bid on a project to have the seventy-five. But I, my memory was that we, and I don't have my notes with me, but I thought it was just, um, if the grant would be denied, that the fifty thousand was there to use. I may be wrong, but that's my.
I don't remember either.
That's my memory. I didn't think it was.
The motion would have been to approve the item, which was a request from Community Development to apply for the twenty twenty-four Wood County Economic Development Grant in the amount of twenty-five thousand to create a downtown development master plan and utilize fifty thousand dollars in the tax increment. So the motion was to approve the request, which means it was to approve them to apply, because that's what the item was. I'm, I'm just reading the item.
Item six does include the twenty-five and the fifty?
It, it approves, it, it says earlier on it was to approve the request. So the, the request was the item, so it approves that.
And to utilize fifty thousand from the TIF.
I mean, I, item was request from Community Development to apply for the grant. I don't, I guess it is however you want to interpret it, but that's.
And to utilize.
It's both in the item and in the motion to utilize the fifty thousand dollars in tax increment District Seven for the project. It's in both the, the agenda item and in the minute.
Okay, so it won't be conditional on.
No.
Getting the grant.
All right, Mr. Benki.
Thank you. I think Kyle already answered my question, but just so I understand, we do not have to have any money to apply for this grant? We don't have to have approved money to apply for this grant?
Correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Zachar.
I guess in, in hindsight looking, remembering the meeting, and I didn't say it then, but it almost seemed like there should have been two separate motions that might have helped save some of the confusion on it. But we didn't, so if it is. Could we separate it now, or is that against the rules?
You can make whatever motions.
So one other question then for Kyle. So the, the, the previous master plan that we had was, I, I forget again what year it was that was developed. Do you remember?
So nineteen ninety-four, and then the waterfront plan is from two thousand nine.
Right, and those, those master plans that we have paid for previously, would you, um, what percentage of those plans do you feel like, looking at, back at them, has been actually carried through to present day?
You know, that's, that's hard to say. I think the impetus for having a new plan is to account for some of the development that's occurred that maybe wasn't necessarily in line with the plan, like the, the county courthouse, some of the other land acquisitions, uh, street changes and improvements. I think the, you know, I can't speak to previous staff, but the intent for a new plan is to utilize it as a living document, as I noted at Property and Finance, to update it annually or every other year to add things to it so that it doesn't just become shelved and become a stagnant document. The idea is to, to implement it and utilize it as a tool to promote development, to respond to development inquiries. I think I alluded to a developer tour that we hosted a couple of weeks ago in which the developers specifically asked for an updated plan on what, you know, the downtown was going to look like and the investment that was going to be made, and that talked about the investment that's been made up to this point. So I think, you know, we're, we're definitely in need of an update, and it'll be utilized at least as long as I'm here in that fashion.
I guess, just, just following up on it, I guess, so let's say we didn't approve this and we didn't get the master plan. Would things continue to move forward based on the old plans? Or do we just kind of, in some ways, go with the flow of, of knowing, for the most part, what can actually, you know, what can go up for sale? Like we said in the meeting, if it's privately done, we have no control over anything, and, well, I'll say anything, but we, you know, over who gets to buy what and what they want to put on it. It's, um, so I guess I'm just curious as to your opinion as to how much we really control this and if it's, I mean, I hear what you're saying. Like you want, you want one as a, as a master document to kind of follow. And I think I just heard you say that some people come in and say they want to see a master plan of the downtown area before they're considering investing in that?
Correct.
I, I get, I get a little, I guess for years now, I've always had a harder time with this. Paying this kind of money and doing it over and over again, so. It's, it's hard, because I want to give you guys what you need as a city, you know, and, and doing the job of the city, but I don't necessarily feel that this is the best use of our money. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Veneman?
Yeah, I, if, if we are available to, um, split these motions, or split it into two motions, I think that would be a good call. I'm not necessarily in favor of pulling that fifty thousand dollars out without really having an idea on it, so. So you said we could.
I see Jake wants to make a motion, so maybe that might clarify.
All right, so you're gonna make it. No, doesn't matter. I just, I'm in favor of making two motions, so.
I was gonna make one and just add that the fifty thousand dollars is contingent on grant approval.
Oh, okay.
I don't know how you want to do it, but.
Oh, I don't want to second that, that's fine.
Do, do you want to make a different motion?
I want to make it, bring it into two motions.
Go ahead, yeah.
Okay.
So there's no motion.
Cancel my motion.
Sorry.
Want to cancel him out?
So.
All right, clear board.
Okay, um. My first motion would be to approve a request by the Community Development Department to apply for a twenty twenty-four Wood County Economic Grant in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars.
Okay, we have a motion by Veneman, seconded by Zachar. Any further discussion on that motion? Nope, you're good. Let me know when you're ready. All right, seeing no further discussion, please, oh, hold on. The grant request. Here's the attachment. This is the memo for, on the grant application. Correct, correct, yep, yep. Yep, this to create a master plan. Uh, Tom, Mr. Ray. Probably should be. We'll, we'll catch up. Go ahead, Mr. Ray. Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree with applying for it, but I, I wonder if the, in the next motion, it's gonna tie in the fifty thousand? Or if the next motion is just gonna be to, I mean, if, if this passes to apply for the grant.
Um, I will make.
Is it gonna, is, the question I have is that, is the fifty thousand gonna be then contingent upon the twenty-five?
My motion would be to apply, it will be to apply for, to utilize fifty thousand on the master plan, but I'll probably vote against it. Because I don't have, we don't have a number of what the master plan costs. And it's not required that we have additional funding to get that twenty-five thousand dollar grant.
Uh, Kyle, if, um, if master plans were, as you mentioned earlier tonight, and I think you did mention at the, at the meeting was actually to, you know, go over the thing every couple of years or so. So if you had an updated plan, wouldn't it be, I'm not saying that guaranteed, but wouldn't it be easier for your, the staff and the council to update a plan? Possibly maybe on their own every couple of years as things were going? That hey, maybe something doesn't fit? That we change this or something to go that route or something? So if we, so if it was a living document, as you stated at the meeting, and I did too that night, that it was, that's kind of what the, the, the plan would be, is that you look at what's there, you, you, you agree at the point of implementation that that's what you want to do. But as time goes by, because it's a living document, you can change things as things start getting put together that something may not fit, or this does fit instead of that, or something like that. So wouldn't that be, uh, if, if the thing was not on the shelf, as has been done, I guess, as in the past, has been alluded to, but is that, wouldn't that be a route that could be undertaken without then having to go back every couple of years to spend fifty thousand or seventy-five to update something? You know, maybe down the road if we've, if we need something new or whatever, but, you know, isn't that the route? Isn't that kind of what we could do?
Yes, that is the intent for us to review the plan, analyze the plan. You know, I'd, I'd like to think that it'd be set up to have checkboxes in terms of if things come to fruition or are implemented, they could be checked off. And as things change within the downtown, new things could be added. The example I referenced earlier is, you know, like the, the vacation of Avon Street. It's no longer there. We could then change the plan to reflect that now it's one parcel. It's a planned development district. It's kind of the county campus. And then we could, right, have more of an updated plan that we'd use as a guiding document rather than something that's stagnant and ten to fifteen years old. Moreover, I, I want to note that that's, that's how it's used, right? It, it's a, it's a way for plan commission and Alders to reference something when responding to a development on the Triangle. It's a way for the public also to identify and understand the potential that a site could become, or, you know, a city block, right, if it were to be redeveloped, what it could become and look like. So again, it's, it's meant to be a guiding document, not only for private development, but public development, for street infrastructure, sense of place items as well, to potentially tie in different events that occur in event space. We obviously have a very strong, you know, parks component with our recent riverfront redevelopment. That we had a, a very strong plan for and implemented three of the four sections of that. And that was the guiding document for those improvements. So I would foresee this to be a guiding document as well for all development that happens within the downtown.
You good, Tom? Oh, okay. Mr. Benki.
Mayor, I'd just like to recognize a member of the audience would like to speak.
Go ahead, Josh. Say your name, please.
My name is Joshua Shu, and I have a few questions about this cool plan. So I read the memo, and just wondering, was this plan really gonna do for a city? Is that a question for you, Kyle, or is that just a, a general question, honestly?
So I think he just explained that about what the plan will do for the city.
Would you like to respond, or?
Yes, if you, yeah, give him a short version.
Yeah, so again, it's, it's used, utilized to be a guiding document for all development so that we can have a cohesive approach to development within the downtown, given the uniqueness of, you know, the density of the downtown, the several road and pedestrian accommodations, that we have something that we can cite to respond to development as well as be proactive to development in downtown.
And this is gonna be on this side of the river, so First Street, First Avenue South, I'm guessing?
Nope, it would encompass the downtown both east, west.
Really?
Yep.
Interesting. That's interesting, because what's gonna happen to the Tribune Building?
That's up to the owner.
I know that, that's Sohance Community Foundation, isn't it?
I'm not sure what the plan, the greater plan is, to be honest.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Josh. Mr. Veneman?
Yeah, I guess this question's for Kyle. So I know at that meeting, we talked about in-house capabilities of doing these types of plans ourselves, and it seemed to me that the biggest issue of, and you remind me if I was missing anything else, was that we don't really have a graphic design team, or we don't have the graphic design capabilities in-house. So I'm just wondering what other reasons why we couldn't plan things on our own, just for the public, I guess?
So I think timing and priorities was also brought up. I think we could certainly try to tackle it. I don't think it would be as detail, detailed as I would hope. My thought with this plan is that we could drill into several of the redevelopment areas, such as the Tribune Block, such as the Triangle Block, the Foundry, you know, other underutilized sites, and really identify a path forward and opportunities when looking at the bigger picture. I don't think, again, we'd be able to in-house drill into great detail with providing those renderings and those drawings of what a site like that could become. And I think that's crucial, especially if we want to use it to actively promote opportunity within the downtown.
And in your experience, then, we have a twenty-five thousand dollar grant we're applying for, and then we have efficient, it, um, what will seventy-five thousand dollars get us? I mean, what, I don't know what master plans cost. It's creating a document, so I.
I think it depends on the level of detail. I think at seventy-five thousand dollars, you're on the, you know, the upper side of, you know, you know, what I would suspect the RFP responses would come in at. Again, you know, we can reference something like the Court Plan, or even the Paper Mill Project, which was more unique, uh, which came in at very different numbers, right? The Paper Mill Project, uh, is coming in at around a hundred to a hundred and, you know, ten thousand dollars versus the Court Plan, which I think was somewhere around thirty to forty thousand dollars. Thank you.
I'll leave my ma, motion, my original motion as it stands, then.
Can we, uh, clarify it to, for what, what the grant we're applying for? Such as the creation of a master plan in that motion?
Yep, okay, so, um, yeah, the motion is to apply for, the request from the Community Development Department to apply for a 2024 Wood County Economic Development Grant in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars to create a downtown development master plan.
Thank you, is that good with you, Mr. Zachary? Okay. Great, any further discussion? I guess, my two cents is that, honestly, I've been planned out for years, but if I went to have heard a number of developers ask for when our last plan was done, and what is the plan to do the next plan, and wanting a copy of it, I don't know, it kind of surprised me, because probably before that day, I would have said I would probably never be in favor of another plan again, but that, it kind of surprised me that this group of developers were all asking for this plan. Just my two cents. All right. Seeing no other questions or comments? Please cast your ballots. That motion carried seven a's, one nay. Any other?
I'll make another motion when it's clear.
Okay. Mr. Benham.
Oops, I meant, I wanted to make a motion, so.
Yeah, you press motion, but I.
Goodbye.
Oh. Okay, so, um.
I, that was just Zoom, I think.
Okay.
Nobody on there, okay.
All right, so, um, I'm going to change it up a little bit. So, um, I'll make a motion to utilize, um, twenty-five thousand dollars from the tax increment, from the TIF, Tax Incremental District Seven for the creation of a downtown development master plan.
And is there a second? We have a second by Bemke. Mr. Cannon.
Thank you. At the committee meeting, it was discussed about, a gentleman there had brought up that some of these plans are essentially copy and pasted from other communities, and it's, um, it reflects, like, everything looks the same, and, uh, we've seen a lot of plans like that. And then we discussed about getting a plan that was more detailed, more specific to our downtown, our city, and that, that might cost extra, but that would be something that was negotiated at that time. So I, I feel like this is a conversation that we need to have after we find out we get the grant. And then I would really like to see the RFP released, and what that would cost to have a plan like that versus this generic plan where they go in and develop a plan, and they do these all the time, and they take it and throw what they have in a safe file on our city, and make sure we can outline that. But without knowing how much the extra would be to be even detailed, it's, it's just really hard to move forward with this, so I wouldn't mind seeing this coming back if we get the twenty-five thousand dollars and having that discussion. But I think we do need to have some costs associated with getting the plan that was discussed at the committee meeting, a really one specific to Rapids, and not this vanilla one that they give to neighboring cities or cities of our size that, uh, the gentleman there was speaking about, because if we get one of those, it's not going to be nothing to a developer to see another plan that looks the same as the others. Obviously, we have a unique downtown, and buildings like the Tribune one are unique to a downtown, unlike what others have. So I, I wouldn't mind seeing, coming back, um, hopefully we get the grant, and then we can discuss it more.
So we have a motion to approve twenty-five thousand dollars from TIF seven, seconded by Bemke. Is there any further discussion? Uh, Mr. Ray.
Thank you again, Your Honor. The reason I want to speak is I think we should go with the whole fifty at this point in time. Again, I don't think it should be that, uh, contingent upon that, uh, if we get the grant, that we, it comes back or whatever, again. Let's make, let's step up to the plate and, um, do what's right. The amount that was, that, is in there is that fifty thousand from the TIF. Kyle found out, or whoever found out about twenty-five, that we could add, if we got that, that could be added to it and enhance the plan, uh, if needed. It's been stated that, um, uh, that, uh, you know, that if we don't have to spend that all, if a plan comes in at fifty-five, we got the twenty-five from the grant. I mean, i- i- if the fifty'd be allotted to make seventy-five, but so it came in at fifty, fifty-five or sixty, the grant money would be used. It won't have to be necessarily the whole fifty thousand from that, from the TIF district. That's the intent of looking at what we can get for a plan that hasn't been addressed in fourteen years. I, I shouldn't say it hasn't been addressed, but the last plan was from fourteen years ago. And to bring us up to date where we are, what's been done, what we want this community to do in the next. Well, if I say fifteen, I'm going to be kind of an old guy by then, getting up there anyway, so. To me, it's the right thing to do, to make this, make the decision all in one tonight. I disagree with the twenty-five, or, uh, only going for twenty-five, I think it should be fifty, uh, that we can use that from the TIF money. Let's do that and see what we get. A number of things have been mentioned that have laid dormant, uh, of what we're trying to do with it, with the downtown. The Triangle block, the Foundry, other things. The Tribune Building, privately owned, but, uh, you know, what, what can, what can we do? And maybe things from the past would still be addressed to possibly look at. I just think it's, uh, if we're going to do that, uh, to commit to the fifty thousand, hoping that the grant is there to make seventy-five. I don't know what one costs, but we don't have a graphic designer on staff, uh, what the wages, benefits, and all would be to have that. But it's something I think to, that we need these assistants to move along at times. And maybe something gathers dust, but if it does, that again is our fault. That we've had the plan, and we let it sit there. That's why we want a new one, updated version, see where we're at. My, my complaint on this is to go for the, would be to go to the fifty added to that twenty-five, and not just twenty-five and twenty-five, so. That's all, Your Honor.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Zach.
I just, um, I just think it would benefit us, I, I'm thinking in two thousand twenty-three, like, there's got to be programs out there that could help us. Again, I'm not trying to burden somebody with it, but we're looking at somewhere between fifty and seventy-five thousand dollars to try to bring this in-house, so that every year we can try to up, update it, so that we're not waiting, you know, twenty years to get an updated thing, you know, um, renderings and everything else. I, I understand what you're saying, like, but, but aren't what we, what we're looking for is a map of the downtown with the different blocks, and what's happening on those blocks, um, outside of, uh, you know, we can get a rendering of a, you know, a super duper building, but there's nothing saying that that's what's going to go there. So if we bring it in, if we, if we figure out how to bring it in-house, and we update it every year, or even as things are happening, wouldn't that, over time, save us a ton of money, but also give us the ability to show somebody an updated map of the downtown area on a year-by-year basis? Because have, have we talked about, talked about it at all? Because there's seventy-five thousand, you know, fifty to seventy-five, if we are bringing it in, or at least if we don't bring it in-house, let's find a company that is willing to, you know, once a year, update that, that master plan su, to some degree, so that it stays current, without costing us seventy-five thousand dollars a year, you know, to, to change it up a little bit. Thank you.
Thank you. So we have a motion and a second on the floor. Any further comments, questions? See none, please cast your ballots. It's a tie. Are you going to boo me? Uh, I'm voting, I'm going to vote nay, because I think, I think if you're going to do it, you need to spend the money on it. I think twenty-five thousand. I'm going to vote nay, I just don't think, if, if you're going to do it, you need to do it right, otherwise, let's not do it. I'm, I'm fine with that. So where do we go from here? That's, that's. Yeah.
Yeah.
Your Honor.
Oh, Kyle, go ahead.
Yeah, I just, I just generally want to comment that, you know, when thinking about the TIF and the project plan and the increment, several years ago, we identified the need for some neighborhood planning to se, to se, to have some sort of guidance, right? As staff, in reviewing those, and having a job to do in terms of implementing existing plans, enforcing the code, I identified that this was in the project plan, I brought it forward for your review, to try to take advantage of this increment prior to the 2027 expenditure period. I've also identified the opportunity to apply for a grant, and tried to couple the two together. And so I think, you know, from my point of view, while I think this is of great benefit to the city, it's also something that I just want to remind you was identified long ago as part of the project plan, and is increment created within the TIF district. Those funds, if not utilized, when that TIF district is dissolved, uh, and/or when the expenditure period ends, those unused funds go back, correct him, to those taxing jurisdictions. So from my point of view, to take advantage of it, when we have a project that is impactful to the downtown as it identifies within that TIF district, seems a win-win for me, uh, which is why we're supportive of it. Thank you.
Mr. Benham. Mr. Benham, let's, then we can, Tom, if you got a motion, then.
Yeah, I guess, um, I just have a hard time voting for something I don't know what it costs, and, um, if we, and, believe me, I'm fully in favor of a downtown master plan, absolutely. I think it's needed, um, whether it has to be outsourced to a major, outsourcing, maybe also just the graphic design aspect, the things we can't have, things that, I'm, but I, my feeling is, um, the reason I changed that dollar number, because I just didn't know, so I figured if, if we can get a grant for twenty-five, and we put in another twenty-five, we got fifty to play with, um, that seems reasonable. But my thoughts are that, um, I am perfectly content to wait and see if we get the grant on this. We'll still be, we still, and I'm not opposed to using TIF towards what we do in this town, there's no, not opposed to that. But I'd rather find out if we have the twenty-five thousand on a grant, and since additional funding from us is not required, I think we go ahead, and that's why I put the motion to apply for the grant. I'm fully in favor of applying for the grant, and then we'll see what, we've got twenty-five, if we get it, we don't, and then, then we bring it back to council and decide what's the master plan worth, and what are we willing to spend on it? That's my thoughts. Thanks.
Uh, Mr. Ray, what's your motion?
My motion is that we utilize the fifty thousand from the TIF to approve the downtown, to go for the downtown plan.
Let's get that clerk.
Master pla, master plan.
For the downtown master plan. So we have a motion, is there anybody that wants to second that motion? We have a second by Mr. Austin. Uh, Mr. Bemke.
I apologize if I missed this, but why can't we put this out for bids? Get the bid, and then decide what we're going to spend? I mean, is there a reason we can't do that? Kyle?
Assuming that was a question directed to me.
That's a question for you, yeah.
Okay. You ha, you can do whatever you, you please, I think, you know, because this was identified in a project plan, I was under the assumption that it was something that we could utilize those dollars for with the approval of council. Should you choose to change your mind and not spend the money, and you want to release the RFP first, we can certainly do that as well. Typically, the RFP process, you're approving a project, and the funds allocated, and then you're releasing the RFP. Very similar to, I think, a, you know, a, a construction project, you have a general idea of how much it's going to cost, but then obviously, you're selecting maybe the lowest bid, or, you know, you might have to come back and amend that, uh, original approval. You know, similar to, I guess, you know, the budgets, right? Uh, when we, when we budget every week, we don't necessarily know exactly the capital costs of what each department head is requesting. But certainly, it is, uh, it is your purview to take whatever action you'd like to.
I, I don't disagree that we need a plan, I, I guess, I've kind of in agreement that it would be, I guess, make more sense to me to put this out and see what we're, I, I know you've given us a rough estimate, but, um, and maybe the motion would be up to and not over fifty thousand, as a possibility. So, thank you.
Mr. Cannon.
Yeah, that's what I was kind of getting at earlier, and I've worked with other government agencies that do it completely different. The RFP is released, the vendors or contractors respond, then the money is budgeted, usually it's going with the lower bidder, and then the RFP is awarded. So it's not that I'm not in support of this, I, I would make a motion that we can release the RFP, and that would give us more to go on. I think it would alleviate a lot of everyone's concerns of what it costs and what we're going to get out of it, it's just hard.
It's just hard with the blank number to not even see the RFP yet, see the bids, and it's allotted for that. So I, Tom's motion's on the floor, but if you're looking for a motion, Kyle, to release the RFP, I'd be happy to make that.
Yeah, there's a second, yours. Uh, Mr. Venom.
Um, just read this, it's gonna cost, Jake, um, do you remember what this cost? The Parks Rec, the Comprehensive Outdoor Recreation Plan?
I think Kyle alluded somewhere between thirty and forty.
Thirty and forty for that? Was that, Kyle, was that?
As I recall, but if you give me a minute, I can pull up the exact number.
Yeah, I mean, that was a pretty, it was very comprehensive, it was a really well-done plan, I'm just wondering, it's, it's so hard to gauge a number on this stuff. I just have a hard time voting for something I don't know what it costs.
Are we waiting for?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Kyle, I was gonna pull up.
Okay.
Just an example, so.
Then, then, um, while Kyle's looking for that, Mr. Delaney?
I was just wondering what happens if this does come in over what we expected to come in, which I don't even know if anybody knows what they're expecting it to be. So, but what happens if it does come out twenty percent higher? What are we gonna do at that point? Are we going to just say, well, we've already allotted fifty thousand, let's put in some extra money? Are we gonna just scrap it? We already have the fifty thousand allotted to this? To me, it doesn't make sense without having any idea what it's gonna cost to approve funding for something. I, I think that's not right, but I'm done, thanks.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Zaker. Identify yourself, please.
Yes, I think anytime you can show that you're willing, as an entity, to put in a matching component, you're increasing the likelihood that the grant will be funded.
Not hearing me, there we go. Sorry about that.
Thanks, Ms. Bemke.
And then on the, the memo on the, it said that it was estimated at seventy-five thousand dollars? And so where did that estimate come from?
Based off of my professional planning experience and other plans that I've administered over the course of my tenure, thank you.
Okay, thank you, that's all.
I'll furthermore comment, you know, typically if this, if we didn't have this identified in a TIF project plan, it would be a capital request. Oftentimes, we would make, make that capital request through the budget process and may not have RFPs for every capital project. So, again, given the level of expertise from engineering project to streets project, HR, you know, typically, being in this field, you have an understanding of what the going rates are, you can reference other plans, like the court plan, the paper mill plan. If it's a process that you guys don't feel comfortable with, don't have to follow staff's recommendation. I'll also note that with regards to the RFP process, you have the ability to select the consultant, right? So the, the staff would review, we'd have a selection committee, we'd bring it back before common council, and ultimately, you would determine who's selected for the, the master planning process. You could also, if it came in higher, you could ask staff to work with the consultant that we like to reduce some of the services they're providing to get it in line with our budget, or vice versa. If it comes in lower and we wanna incorporate additional things, you'd have the authority to, to do that and kind of adjust accordingly. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Who? Oh, I'm sorry, Jake.
Uh, yeah, the Parks Master Plan, twenty-four thousand five hundred.
Sorry, what?
Twenty-four thousand five hundred. Thank you. Okay. Everybody knows the motion? Fifty thousand, tip funds. Okay, seeing no further discussion, please cast your ballot. That motion failed, three A's to five nays. Okay, any other? Mr. Catna.
Kyle, I'm, I'm prepared to make a motion that an RFP can be released for this, if that's something you're interested in, or if you don't think it's worth it because we don't have the money allotted, then I won't make the motion, but.
I think that's fine. I, I think I would ask for clarification as to whether or not it's stipulated based upon grant approval.
I think to save your office some time, would you wanna wait for the grant to be approved?
I think that would, that would help.
Okay.
Then we'd, we'd have an idea as to whether or not it'd come entirely out of TIF, or if we could supplement with the grant.
Okay.
Moreover, I would then suggest that, you know, we can come back to council with an update on the grant and then possibly have this item determined after we know if the grant was obtained. I think I could probably also reach out to some consultants or some communities that recently exercised a master plan within their downtown area and provide some examples of those, those costs, if that would help.
Yeah, I think all that would help. I think, once the RFP is released and we can see what you guys put together for it, the details, and what the bids come back at, I think it'll be a lot easier process to allot the TIF money towards whatever consultant you guys think is best and maybe see a few of them. But, yeah, it'll be nice to see the RFP. I'll make a motion that it's contingent on, well, I was gonna tell Kyle what my motion is, but I'll, I'll just say the motion. Motion to release a request for proposal for a downtown master plan contingent on receiving the Wood, two thousand twenty-four Wood County Economic Development Grant.
Thank you, we have a motion by Catna, seconded by Delaney. Yep. Uh, Mr. Venom, go ahead.
I'm sorry, um, refresh my memory, Kyle, when is that bid awarded, the twenty-five thousand?
I think they're planning to at the end of July.
Okay. Thanks, that's all I need to say.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Delaney, second. Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. That motion carried six A's with two nays. Are we ready to wrap up finance report? Okay, let's move on to item eleven B, which is Public Works Committee meeting held on July sixth. Mr. Rayom.
Okay.
Is your microphone on?
Over there.
There you go, thank you.
The Public Works Committee met on Thursday, July sixth, two thousand twenty-three, in the council chambers at City Hall. All members are present, others attending are listed below. Item one is called a meeting to order, is called to order at five P.M. Item two, review engineering and street department monthly activity report, uh, report was, were reviewed, reports were reviewed. Item three, review and consider adding a two-hour parking restriction on Saratoga Street from East Jackson Street to Seventh Street North, and on Fifth Street North from East Jackson Street to Saratoga Street. Motion by Rayom, seconded by Austin, to approve a two-hour parking restriction on Monday through Friday from nine A.M. to five P.M., which would expire in June of two thousand twenty-five at the completion of the jail project with the condition that Wood County and/or the general contractor pay the out-of-pocket cost for the signs. Pollock raised concerns about the potential of moving the parking problem to another area rather than rem, rem, not remedying the problem. Motion carried three to zero. Item four, review and consider adding a two-hour parking restriction from seven A.M. to four P.M. on school days on Angler Drive from Twenty-Fifth Avenue to Twenty-Seventh Avenue South. Mr. Michael McLarmen, resident at twenty-six twenty Angler Drive, spoke about the parking situation, which includes blocking driveways and mailboxes, along with safety issues for the students. Elder President Venom confirmed the parking issues. Alison Graff, resident on Angler Drive, also spoke in favor of approving the parking restriction. Mayor Blazer offered to reach out to W.R.P.S. and the police to go over the situation. Motion and a second to approve the two-hour parking restriction as presented, that motion carried three to zero. Item five, review bids, review for the, for the two thousand twenty-three sewer lining contract and consider award to the low-qualified bidder. The motion by Austin, seconded by Rayom, to award the project to Instiform Technologies USA LLC in the amount of two hundred and seventy-six thousand, sixty-six dollars and ninety-six cents. That motion carried three to zero. Item six, consider a preliminary resolution for public work and improvement on East Jackson Street between Jackson Street Bridge and East Grand Avenue proposed for construction in two thousand twenty-five. Motion by Rayom, seconded by Pollock, to approve the preliminary resolution, that motion carried three to zero. Item seven, consider preliminary resolution for public work and improvements on Harrison Street between Seventh Avenue North and Ninth Avenue North proposed for the construction in two thousand twenty-five. Motion by Austin, seconded by Pollock, to approve the preliminary resolution, that motion carried three to zero. Item eight, review the referral list, the list was reviewed and updated. Item nine, set the next meeting date, a special meeting to consider an asphalt change order is set for July eleventh at three thirty P.M. The next monthly meeting date will be August third, two thousand twenty-three, at five P.M. Another meeting is being coordinated for a tour of the capital improvement projects. Items ten was to adjourn, there was a motion, a second, to adjourn at six oh one P.M. That motion carried three to zero. And with that, Your Honor, I'll move for the adoption of the report.
Thank you, Mr. Rayom. We have a motion by Rayom, seconded by Venom. Any discussion? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. That motion carried seven A's, one nay. And then we're on to item C, which is a Public Works Committee meeting held on July eleventh. Mr. Rayom.
Thank you, Your Honor. Public Works Committee met on Tuesday, July eleventh, two thousand twenty-three, in the first floor conference room at City Hall. All members were present, others attending are listed below. Item one, call the meeting to order, is called to order at three forty-eight P.M. Item two, review and consider a change order to the two thousand twenty-three asphalt contract to include asphalt tonnage for the parking lot at the dog park. Motion by Pollock, seconded by Rayom, to approve the asphalt change order in the amount of thirteen thousand five hundred twenty-six dollars and ten cents. That motion carried three to zero. Item three was to adjourn, there was a motion by Austin, seconded by Pollock, to adjourn at three fifty-three P.M. That motion carried three to zero. And with that, Your Honor, I'll move for adoption of the report.
Thank you, Ms. Rayom. We have a motion by Rayom, seconded by Pollock. Any discussion? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. That motion carried seven A's, one nay. We are on to item D, which is the Human Resource Committee meeting held July eleventh. Uh, Mr. Bemke.
Thank you, Mayor. Human Resource Committee met at, on Tuesday, July eleventh, at two fifteen P.M. Item one, meeting was called to order at two nineteen. Item two was discuss and consider for approval of creation of an administrative lieutenant position within the Wisconsin Rapids Police Department. Motion by Bemke to approve the creation of the administrative lieutenant position within the Wisconsin Rapids Police Department. Motion died on the floor for lack of a second, no other motions regarding this item were made. Item three, discuss and consider for approval of the hiring of temporary firefighter positions within the W.R.F.D. due to the long-term leaves. There was a motion by Catna, seconded by Bemke, to approve the hiring of two temporary firefighter positions within the W.R.F.D. due to long-term leaves with an end date of twelve thirty-one twenty-three, or upon the return of those currently on leave, whichever comes first. Motion carried two to one. Item number four was adjournment, motion by Delaney, seconded by Bemke, to adjourn. Motion carried three zero, meeting was adjourned at three thirty-seven. With that, Mayor, I would like to submit this for approval, that is a motion, and hold item number two out, please.
Thank you. We have a motion by Bemke to approve the report, holding out item two, seconded by Venom. Is there any further discussion on the balance to report? Okay, seeing none, please cast your ballots. That motion carried seven A's, one nay. Mr. Bemke, item number two.
Thank you, Mayor. I think, first of all, I would like to recognize the Chair of the Police and Fire Commission to come up and speak, please.
Good evening, I'm Bruce King, my address is eleven eleven twentieth place. Uh, Mr. Mayor and common council, thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. About a year ago, the mayor made a request that we bring in an outside independent contractor to do a, this police study of the Wisconsin Rapids Police Department, then it was approved by the common council. They did the study, took about four and a half months. We learned a lot of information, they interviewed a lot of people, officials, independent citizens, members of the police department, police department administration, patrol officers, and we found a lot of positive and good things about the police department. We also found some things that needed to be improved upon, and some concerns that were, concern of the mayor's, concern of the police department. We also felt it was important that we get this study completed before we hire a new chief. When, when our first, first of all, when our deputy chief told us four months in advance that he was gonna retire, our chief police then told us he was gonna retire in seven months. All of a sudden, I got a call from the chief saying, Bruce, I'm gonna retire, and he gave us a two-week notice. So that left us in a real bind because a week later, our deputy chief is gonna retire. So we're stuck with no one to run the police department, and we were fortunate enough to put together a plan directed by the mayor, and we all approved it, and we had Mike Pataki bump up from lieutenant to interim deputy chief, or interim chief, and, and he did a good job for us. But, um, I, I'm concerned because in this study, they talked about all sorts of things we needed, or they suggested. I think you guys spent probably, and don't quote me, let me, thirty-five thousand on this study, and one of the important things they discussed is that we go back to having an administrative lieutenant position. And I'd let the chief of police speak on why this is important, but also I'd like to point out that if we would've had administrative lieutenant position, we went to had a scurry and try and find an interim chief. We'd had someone in line that was trained, that was with the administration, to know exactly what to do and when to do it. I guess one thing, I have a question for you as council members, for those that are concerned about not making this position available, I guess, is it the money issue, or is there a reason why you don't think we need this position? And if someone could respond to that, I'd appreciate it. Okay, just curious, because I was just.
Well, it was only the three people, excuse me, the three people at the committee, there wasn't a second, and I'm glad it came to the council, because I, I'd like to talk about that issue.
Yeah, and I, and I can tell you also, like, I was glad to see you guys approved the temporary employees of the fire department. We went through a couple dozen candidates this last year alone, doing interviews of both entry-level police. entry-level police officers and entry-level firefighters. We no more than get them on the list, and within less than a month, someone scarfs them up to another community. And you can't blame these candidates. They want a job, they're, they're not sure where they're headed. But it's so important that we move forward. I think the police department, which I brought up two months ago here, fifty-one years ago, they had the same people, the same amount of squads patrolling the city of Wisconsin Rapids minimally as they do right now. It's fifty-one years. Not much has changed in that area. I think we need to start moving forward. So I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. King. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Katna.
I was, sir, I'll answer your question. I'm on the committee of why I didn't second the motion. Would these positions come to us on the HR committee at a time where we're currently projecting our budget for next year? We're going to start discussions next month. And the way city policy works is we cannot talk about the finance, well, we can bring it up, but we can't talk about the financial aspect of the position at the HR committee because that belongs under the finance committee. We also have policy in place that once a position is created, we fill that position or we have to bring it back and eliminate it. And we cannot fund it in the budget, but the position will still exist once it's created. It just wouldn't be filled if we don't fund it in the budget. So I had some conflict with that being the, the policies and where we're at and would like to see the budget and the funding and where things are going to fall before we go ahead in our approving positions that will be funded in the budget or we have to at budget time when we got all this other stuff going on, be like, remember that one position from back in July? Let's defund that and send it back to HR and then eliminate it because we don't have the money. So I, I thought it was a little early and want to see where the budget numbers shake out, but I do fully support the position and the chief provided us a document of his plan and vision for the police department and, and what the personnel structure is there. So at, at this time, and we're just waiting, I'm personally waiting and I didn't second to see where we fall as a city financially and if we should create a position before we know if we can fund it. And I've had some discussions since then on where we're at on that, but that was what happened at the committee meeting.
Mr. Veneman.
Thanks. Jake, I kind of, it's coming back to me now what we talked about. It wasn't about, it was more about policy and maybe hopefully being able to restructure the policy in a way. I'm fully in favor of this position and I hope we find a way to fund it. So I just wanted, it came back to me now as at the meeting, but I forgot. We went through and back in the different ways. So that's kind of where I'm at, but I'm in favor of this.
So, so we don't have a motion on the floor, so we're just kind of randomly talking. I don't know if anybody wants to do a motion or, uh, Mr. Katna?
I'm in favor of this position. I believe that our budget talks will start soon and we will have a better idea, but at this time, because it failed at the committee level, I would refer it back to committee. So my motion will be to refer this item back to the Human Resource Committee.
We have a motion by Katna, seconded by Veneman, to refer it back to committee. Probably Tim could maybe give, sorry, some history on this. You know, we, I think the struggle comes in as, as we've talked, the cart before the horse and I, I don't think you want to kind of change it to, because you're going to end up seeing in the budget, every department's going to have two, three people in there and you're going to be, you're going to be, you're going to be faring that through the budget process where it's really about taking the HR, having that discussion, because at that point, you can determine that we don't really see as a city that it's necessary to have the position. And at that point, you can say, no, we don't see this necessary. I think you're going to potentially could overwhelm yourself by seeing a number of departments thinking that they might need positions within their department and it will show up during the budget time. And so you're going to end up tackling all that at budget time. And I believe that's why it was created, so at least it could be determined that whether we need that position or not. And if we don't, then it's not talked about at budget time. So I, I think that's a lot where it came from at that point. Okay, we got a motion to second on Florida, send it back to HR. Please cast your ballots. That motion carried five As, three Nays. That's true, there is no referral to finance then. And I think there's a policy that needs to be updated then because that staff is just following the council's policy. Mr. Delaney?
I have a question on parliamentary procedure. In our rules, two oh four, sub three, sub C, says no matter shall be acted upon by the common council except upon the recommendation of the appropriate committee in part. It goes on. There's a little bit for that. So I'm wondering if this rule means that we, if it doesn't pass committee, which in my opinion, I think the committees are too small to have three people, that you could just have two people-
Holding up.
Holding up important issues. So what I'm wondering is if it doesn't pass committee, how can it be acted upon when it goes against these rules?
Well, a recommendation could be a favorable recommendation. It could be a unfavorable recommendation. It could be no recommendation. I, I guess, I think that gets to that, everything needs to go to a committee before it goes to council. So I guess I can just tell you that it's been the practice of the council that they've always taken up matters from the committee, whether they were favorable or not. So I guess if, if something doesn't pass the committee, are you saying that it should not ever go, even get to council then if it's not a favorable recommendation or? Which isn't, I mean, I guess that's not my, my reading of it. I think the whole council is, the committee is to kind of divet things at first to, you know, smaller group, discuss, and then the recommendation or, you know, the whatever goes to council. I mean, sometimes it's been whether there's no motion that comes out or sometimes it's a motion that's defeated. But then we always allow the council to, to consider it. And I think the recommendation is simply, you know, whatever the, whatever the committee might say, whether that's a yes or a no, or we, we can't decide. We want the council to decide. So, I mean, I guess if you, if you, you know, want that to be more clear, we can work on language of what, you know, how you want that to read, but I can just tell you in the past, it's been that favorable and unfavorable recommendations are, go to council so that the whole, the whole council can determine. Because like you said, you know, to have two people basically say no and then it never gets to the council doesn't seem to be fair either. Or if there's only two people at the committee meeting and one, and one says no and one says yes, and then there's no recommend, you know, nothing goes to the council. And I don't think that's the intent behind it, but fair, fair question.
Okay, so, so I understand everything that you're saying. When an item is not acted upon at all, that would not be a recommendation for it or against it. And in the, also in that same chapter, it states, "In the event of a question of parliamentary procedure, action on the issue before the common council shall be held in abeyance until the matter is clarified," with a quotation from Roberts' Rules of Order by the parliamentarian.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, and I just gave you my, I mean, I, I would say we're subject to Roberts, to the, until we have rules, specific rules that take the place of Roberts. So we have our general, you have statutory rules in the Wisconsin statutes that we have to abide by in terms of our meetings and notices and how we conduct business. Then we can have local ordinances that decide the rules and how we conduct our business. And then there's Roberts. And so, you know, Roberts is kind of the default if you don't have, if there aren't specific statutes or ordinances that, you know, prescribe the conduct of the council. So I would say this isn't a Roberts issue. It's an interpretation of the council ordinance or the city ordinance regarding recommendations, saying that things have to go to a committee first, they must be in writing, and then go to council. So I guess that's, that would be my advice on what recommendation means in terms of getting something to council.
I, so I'm still not clear on if something does not get a second at all, such as if there's three people and two people and none of the two second it. Or if there's one and the other guy doesn't second it. It really doesn't state in here. I mean, I don't think that is a-
Well, it's still, I mean, it was still an issue that was discussed at the committee. It's still an issue that is actually on the council agenda as an item to be discussed, right? Because we, we put all of the committee report or committee agenda items into the council so that, you know, they're all, everyone can see what's going to be talked about. So, I mean, I, I guess, if you're saying that if, if there's no motion that comes out of a committee, I mean, I, we, we talked about this last month or the month before where it's kind of what is the expectation that, especially if something's held over at, at the committee level? You know, two, there's two people there and they both agree that it should be held over till the next meeting. Well, then, when it comes to the council meeting, does that mean that someone in the council can say, hey, I, I want this to happen now, I'm going to make the motion to approve the whatever? And we kind of had that discussion over whether that's appropriate or not, and I, I think that it seemed like you all had agreed that that could be something that would, would happen. But I think your vote indicated that maybe, you know, and I, I don't even remember what the item was, but, you know, but is that, is that, you know, kind of fair or due process to the whole thing where if someone showed up at the committee meeting and, you know, nothing happened and they're like, oh, okay, well, it's going to come back next month. I'm not going to go to the council meeting then because they're probably not going to talk about it. But then they did. So, I mean, I, I agree some, you know, I, I'm just kind of going back on the history and how things have been done, and I agree that probably if, if you feel strongly about tightening, tightening up those rules or, or in disagreement with those rules, then, you know, that's something to consider addressing. But I, you know, I guess, you know, all of you collectively can make those decisions of whether you want to have something decided today or not or held over or whether it's appropriate to have something decided. So I guess I'm just kind of-
You know, okay, so in my view, three people is not enough for a committee. If two, two people in the same committee meet for breakfast or something like that, it could be considered a walking forum. That's one thing. Second thing is, is why do we have committees if things that are not recommended goes to the council and then are discussed? I mean, why not just have a council meeting?
Well, I think the vast majority of time, I mean, how often does this happen that there's no recommendation? And I just had another thought and I forgot what I was going to say. Yeah, I, I mean, it, it happens rarely and I, like I said, I guess, oh, I, I think the better course of action probably would have been at that meeting that when the motion was made and it failed, if the other two felt strongly that this should be killed at that point, then the motion should have been to deny the, to deny the, the item, right? And then that would have been a unfavorable recommendation, but at least there would have been something that, you know, I guess to your argument of needing something to act upon, then that could have been acted upon rather than just nothing, really, like you said, nothing happening because there's not, there's a motion and no, no second. So there really isn't anything that happened arguably, but, you know, like I said, I think, you know, if you want, you want to close that loophole, then, then maybe someone would, should have made the motion to dispose of it, you know, negatively or, or seconded the motion, like, yeah, exactly. Like, we like motions and the affirmative. Could have seconded the motion. Seconding a motion doesn't mean you support it. It's just meaning that you're willing to put it to the body to, to decide or to talk about or discuss. So then second and then it fails two to one or one to two or however, so.
I, I'm still not clear on it and I, I'm sorry that I, I'm not clear. Like you said, if it gets voted down, then that's a recommendation in the negative, which could be overturned. If there is nothing that happens to it, it's not a recommendation at all.
Well, if you're, if you're, if, if you're saying that it, there has to be a motion out of a committee in order for the council to decide something, then collectively as a body, then when that happens, then don't take it up. Then say it's been, I mean, I guess, I guess I'd err on the side of, you know, putting it before the body to determine what happens with that item versus having one person possibly kill the whole thing and not having it go to council, like you said, because we have such small committees, but.
Yeah, and I think that's the concern is the committee is only recommending, making recommendations, whether for or against or, and I always looked at over the years as committees where we have the bulk of the discussion and debate. I've seen Tom on Public Works Committee, three people voted against an item and the council voted in favor of it. And so, you know, I, I just think that the committee is really, what we've talked about with, you know, eliminating committees is the purpose is just, I think, the more of the bulk of the discussion takes place there and then council can kind of take it from there because, yeah, like you said, there's only three people and they, they don't swing a big enough hammer to make a decision for the council. Thank you. Mr. Katna?
Thank you. So I just want to clarify that we have been following.
There's no motion.
I don't have a motion.
No.
Because we just talked about it, right?
Yeah. So, yeah.
No. There's not an item.
Want me to talk about it?
I guess there was.
Like, I guess the, the parliamentary question, is that answered then? Because from his reading, it sounds like we haven't been following the correct policies. So is, do we have a loophole then because we put everything on the common council's agenda? Or, I just want the question answered simply, have we been following the correct rules or not?
Yes. That's what I, yeah, right. I, I believe we have. I believe it's been historically how it's been. I-
We aren't talking about item two yet, are we?
We're actually, we're done. It's been moved and seconded to send it back to HR.
Okay.
So, yeah.
It's been moved and seconded to do-
Yeah, and voted, the five to three.
That's, okay, that's five to three.
On the item?
I just have one quick question. How many people are on the finance committee?
Three.
Three. So basically what we're saying is that two people have a lot of power. So two people on the finance committee can basically decide how the finances of the city of Wisconsin Rapids are going to work because if two people out of three vote a certain way, am I right in saying then two people really control the finances?
because if two people out of three vote a certain way, am I right in saying then two people really control the finances?
No, because then it, it really just comes to the council then at that point, no matter, you know, that's kinda been the discussion, if they vote something down, or if they vote affirmative of something, or it can be a tie. And also this discussion here, no action taken is really kind of what it is. But, yeah, that's kind of been the question, is whether one or two people could hold up an item and make that decision for the whole council.
And anybody who knows me knows me, I'm a rule follower. So I really respect the fact that you're wanting to follow the rules, because a lot of people don't.
Bruce is a rule follower.
It makes me nervous to think that I'd rather have ten people making a decision than just two, so.
And that's what I think would be the tragedy here, is that, that, if that would be allowed, that, you know, the whole council that was elected to represent the community wouldn't have that ability.
Thank you, then.
Anyways, I think we should probably move on, but, Mr. O.
I think we should move on to what I was gonna talk about. I think addresses, would address somewhat what Bruce has talked about. We can do that when we get to, an item down, I think, further on the agenda.
Perfect, sounds good. Let's go to item twelve, reports of other committees, commissions, boards, and departments. What are your wishes? Holding on? We don't wanna take a vote. Okay, we're good. Okay. What, what are your wishes? So we have a motion by Bemke to approve and place on file.
Place on file.
And we have a second by Mr. Zachar. Any questions or comments on the reports? We have the library director here, if you have any questions on the library reports. Thanks for hanging out there, Catherine. All right, Mr. Veneman? You're good.
I just, I was looking at Parks and Rec Commission. I was just gonna ask Jake if anything's going on in the tunnel.
Oh, yeah.
If you could tell what I'm talking about.
Yeah, I got delivered, we, last week, everything's installed, and we're filling the pen right now, so it's moving along.
Okay, so that's the tunnel for the prairie dog exhibit at the zoo.
I can show you a picture after the meeting.
Okay, I just wanted to know where we're at, because as of last, as of that meeting, we hadn't heard it yet. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Katna?
Jake, would you mind giving us an update on aquatics?
Uh, yeah, one sec. I believe all the revenue numbers are included in the packet, but just comparing some numbers from twenty...
Your mic.
It's on, just not close enough. Reviewing numbers from, comparing them from last year. We are ahead of last year's numbers by about five thousand for total sales on daily passes, non-resident, resident passes, season passes, and then which are merchandise sales. We are just shy of seven thousand dollars over what we were last year from today.
Thank you. Weather, weather's been good for it. Uh, Mr. Delaney?
Okay, here's another dumb question for you. Say, everybody voted no on placing these on file. What happens to them? We can't really change anything that's already happened in these meetings, right? We're not approving them. So why is this a line item that we have every month?
I agree, there is no legal significance to what you do with these reports. But I, I think it's just a way to recognize, call out each of the reports, allow older persons to comment on them. But placing them on file is not of legal significance. But it's always, go ahead. Could be.
Good one, yeah. I was just asking if that is also an opportunity to correct any reports that need to be correcting, corrected?
I, I agree with you, Patrick. I, I think the only benefit is, by doing this, you kinda get them all, whoops, all in organized kind of with the council packet, but, yeah, I don't think there's any reason to put it on file. And maybe, I don't know if we can change, we can, we'll, we'll have, we'll have a surprise for you next month, Patrick. Uh, Mr. Katna?
I speak to the minute, or the reports of other committees, commissions, and boards, and Patrick's comment. I've fought this battle in the past, because as an elected official, I mean, we got thirteen different reports here of committees or commissions that we are not a part of, that we don't get to do what we've done this meeting, which is pull items off their agenda, discuss them, change them, adjust them, and we're supposed to be representing the citizens on all these. But I, I've brought this issue in the past, and I'm not gonna beat a dead horse on it, so. But that's kinda how these commissions and, and reports work on this. And if we wanted to change it, I think we'd have to address it as a whole body. So that's where it was left at the last time.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to place them on file, maybe one last time. Please catch your ballots. That motion carried seven As, zero NAs, run item thirteen, referrals to committees. If you have any referrals, can you, oh, go ahead, submit them to the clerk. Oh, I'm sorry, the clerk does have referrals, so hold on.
I do have one referral. It is from Alderperson Katna for the legislative committee to change the requirement for reading of ordinances from two readings to one.
Thank you. And then, Mr. O, you'll have one, but if you can get it to the clerk, but if you could tell us what it is, that'd be fine.
Okay, I'll tell you what it is, because it's at home. I did not bring it, and I didn't send it to the clerk in time, so. Actually, hopefully, I think there's a chance to maybe take care of some issues that were raised this evening, and it's the, this is an issue that is there that, and that's to increase the council size to ten. And this isn't for, I'm just saying what it is, so we're not, don't have to talk about it tonight.
Yep.
And just, and that it would be paid far out of the budget. The intent is that this would be done soon, and that so it could take place with everything that had to be done by, before, I guess it'd be December, to take, so it could take effect at next election in April. And with that, and there's other things that are in there, and that's also to, as has been alluded to tonight, but increase the committee size, which can be done, because we are, in my have been way, I'll use understaffed, a number of people on a committee. I don't think, we'll talk about it later as we go to that. And I think that's probably basically what I have, but it'll be in the office tomorrow, so it has to do with that.
Sounds good. Uh, Mr. Katna?
It wouldn't be in order to ask a question on his referrals, or, or one of them?
Uh, we could probably talk about that later date, or...
Tom, can you speak to why you wanna go to ten aldermen?
I guess maybe, how about we discuss it?
Wait, wait until we talk about the whole thing.
Yeah, then you can talk about the whole thing at one time. Okay, item fourteen is not needed, because we disposed of it at the finance committee, same with fifteen, same with sixteen, and now on to item seventeen, which is adjournment. What are your wishes? We have a motion by Reom. Now, we're voting on nothing. Probably come up with a tie. All right, so we have a motion by Reom to adjourn. Is there a second? Uh, with by Zachar, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Anybody opposed? We're doing a voice vote. All right, we are adjourned.